Good evening, I'd like to call the Tuesday, March 22nd, 2016, School Board Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Fallon.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hirons.
Here.
Ms. Kidby.
Here.
Just make Oscar.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. This evening, I'd like us all to stand for the invocation and then the colors will be presented by the cadets from Brookpoint High School, cadets Downs, Waldner, Williams, and Egan. If you'll...
Should I?
Yes, I did. You all will stand for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
We will move on to approval of the agenda.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, the agenda is approved. Now, we move on to a wonderful part of our program with our awards. We will open this evening, I'd like to recognize Sheriff Decatur, First Sergeant Diggs, Deputy Scoggins, Steininger, and Shannon from the Sheriff's Office for presentation of awards. And I see the brass coming forward.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Benson, I'm so pleased to be here this evening to recognize the number of outstanding principals, teachers, bus drivers, and support staff from throughout our school district. Would the members of the educator basketball team, please come forward as I call your name. Head Coach Beth Davenport, Assistant Coach Matt Anthousner, team members Maureen Phaler, Nick Testament, Karen Jackson, Courtney Nunnally, Debbie Hamilton, Joe Blozwick, Heidi Sloan, Chris Napoleon, Karen Mazarski, Ashley Mansfield, Georgette Willis, Drew Forrest, Mallory Sanner, Megan Sekinger, Ed Potter, and Danny Fernandez. These professionals displayed professionalism and sportsmanship as they won the educator versus law enforcement Dare Day Basketball Fundraiser. The final score was forty-seven to thirty-four. This year's fundraiser had approximately twelve-hundred people in attendance, with the most funds raised since the event was started in 2010 by safety and security led by Greg Martin and First Sergeant Nancy Moran. The final total raised was fifty-eight-hundred, and the funds will go to support this year's Dare Day. I would also like to acknowledge Deputy Steininger and Deputy Scoggins who spent countless hours planning and organizing this event. You're standing to my left here? And last but not least, I would also like to acknowledge Sheriff Decatur and Major Lynn Hart who continuously support the Dare Program.
Thank you so much.
Where's the picture?
Oh, the picture?
You're supposed to be in the picture.
I'd like to just say one thing. Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Benson, thank you so much. We are truly blessed to have such an awesome relationship with the School Board, the school faculty, teachers, educators, the students, and we're just so fortunate to have that collaboration and partnership. And we're going to continue to work hard to keep our school safe and to have an awesome working relationship to keep our community strong. So, thank you so much. And you guys put together a dream team this year, and we're looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, let's get our good picture here.
Did we...we won last year too, right Sheriff?
I think that's right.
I think we won last year too, right? Okay, I'm just checking, just checking. Well, if you notice, hang on, most of our team's not here. It's because they're practicing. Getting ready. Yeah, they're on educator practice time.
I hope that young lady's foot wasn't here on education.
It was.
Was it? Yeah. Next, I'd like to recognize Andrew Bathke, Assistant Principal Stafford High School, for presentation of awards.
Madam Chairman, School Board Members, Superintendent Benson, I'm pleased to bring to your attention some of the most outstanding students from Stafford High School. Would the members of our state one-act play cast and crew, please come forward. These students and their director, Michael Dodario, recently returned from the VHSL 5A State Theater Festival with another first place for their play, The Caucasian Chalk Circle. They won an honorable mention for the production at Virginia Theatre Association Secondary School Theater Festival, and a technical merit award, and a costume merit award. Cooper Shaw received All-State Cast Honors. At the VHSL Conference 15 Theater Festival 2016, they received first place for Best Play, and Outstanding Actor Awards went to Madeleine Price and Cooper Shaw. At the VHSL 5A North Regional Theater Festival, they received first place, Best Play, and Outstanding Actor Awards went to Madeleine Price and Cooper Shaw. The cast are Director Michael Dodario, Co-Director Chad Johnson, Musical Director Joseph Eveler, and our students Ryan Anderson, Diana Bloom, Cannon Bonney, Nathan Borkowski, Keryon Broian, Alexis Byers, Courtney Clyde, Maddie Council, Caitlin Dreek, Ben Earnhardt, Savannah Ellis, Annie Fitzgerald, Gabby Fox, Dimitri Fennell, Morgan House, Caleb Johnson, Andreas Jordan, Colleen Clivino, Wright Mercer, Kathy Guin, Yun Hi-O, Wilson Pezuto, Madeleine Price, Erin Pugh, Leila Ryan, Cooper Shaw, Wade Segal, Hanley Stanley, Stephen Schultz, Will Stimson, Jordan Washington, and Logan Welch. And at this time, please accept on our behalf invitations to the next Stafford High Drama Production, The Jungle Book. Thank you.
And I always love Mr. Bathke. It's almost like "Let's Make a Deal," that voice, and the next contestant. Good job, Andy. Good job, folks.
Thank you all for coming. Can't wait to see the next production. I would like to next recognize Anna Marie Bellino, our Fine and Performing Arts Coordinator, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Benson. I'm delighted to present to you several Stafford County music students who have received state recognitions. And I'm going to begin with our vocalists. These talented and hard-working singers auditioned amongst hundreds of high school seniors from across the Commonwealth, and were selected for the 2015 VMEA Honors Choir. We are very proud of the students, and four of our high schools were represented. The amazing accomplishments of the students are not possible without the instruction, the guidance, and encouragement of their extraordinary high school choir directors. Barbara Perry from Colonial Forge, Anita Keen from Mountain View, Kate Trunkelbach from North Stafford, and Joe Eveler at Stafford High School. And I think I do have one here, so if Mr. Eveler will come forward. Our music students tend to be very busy, and I apologize for that. And because of that, we have a few that aren't able to join us, but we've gotten snowed out a few times, so we wanted to make sure that we got these awards in. And if these students are here, we definitely want them to come forward. From Colonial Forge High School, Alexandra Ortner and Monica Slater. From Mountain View High School, Zoe Woodiman. From North Stafford High School, Naesther Cummings...Mick Cummings, excuse me, and Jasmine Ward. And from Stafford High School, Trevor White. So, please join me in congratulating these students on their success.
I would also like to recognize Jacoby Student, who is a student at Stafford High School. Jacoby auditioned amongst hundreds of high school musicians from across the Commonwealth, and was selected for the 2015 VMEA All-Virginia Jazz Ensemble. We're really proud of his accomplishment, and on a personal note, I am, because I remember when he was an itty-bitty at Falmouth and I was the music teacher. So, it's a teacher pride, too. Right, Jacoby? But I also would like to commend his high school band director, Eddie Steenstra, for his leadership, his encouragement in cultivating Mr. Smith. So, please join me in congratulating Jacoby on his honor. It is also my distinct pleasure to introduce to you the Colonial Forge High School Percussion Ensemble. And if I could have Directors Matt Nelson and Kevin Taylor join me up here. Under the direction of these two gentlemen, this ensemble submitted a recording last spring, and in a very competitive field, and was offered an invitation for the entire group to perform at the annual VMEA Conference that is held in November every year. The percussion ensemble performance was incredibly well-attended, and the audience was comprised of mostly music educators, pre-service teachers, and collegiate faculty from across the Commonwealth. And it's a really tough audience, by the way. But after the performance, we received many compliments about the musical ensemble, its student musicians, and its musical leadership. We're really proud of the Forge Percussion Ensemble, and we would like to congratulate those students. So, students, come on forward as I call your name. Tyler Feakin, McConna Maderos, Caleb Taylor, Lee Watts, Josh Base, Sierra Henderson, Jennifer Weber, A.J. Morrison, Havon Nguyen, Brian Queenen, and Hayden Rilmudo. We would now like to entertain you with a brief selection, as you can probably already see. This selection is entitled "Wood, Metal, and Skin," and the students did perform this piece at the convention in November, and so I hope that you will enjoy.
That was awesome. That was really fun. Thank you all for coming and also performing. Well, Mr. Haran, guess what? You're next. I don't know if you're going to sing yours or not. You're sort of in a long line here, but I'm going to introduce Mr. Haran for presentation of awards.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board Members. That's quite a tough act to follow. That was awesome. I'd like to invite Mike Seibothin, Principal of Grafton Village Elementary School, and Tom Henry, Project Manager, from the Facility Planning, Design, and Construction Department, to come down forward, please, and help present this award. And if one of the board members from our both, that'd be great. This is a pretty significant event for the facilities and new construction and renovation. As part of Stafford County Public Schools Energy Management and Sustainability Programs, Stafford County Public Schools has adopted the U.S. Green Building Council's Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Sustainability Standards for new school construction and major renovations, or better known as LEED. LEED is a certification program for buildings and communities that guide in their design, construction, and operations and maintenance towards sustainability. It's based on prerequisites and credits that a project meets to achieve a certification level, from certified, silver, gold, and platinum. I'm extremely proud tonight to announce that Grafton Village Elementary School renovation project is the first major Stafford County Public Schools capital project to earn LEED certification. The Grafton Village renovation project achieved a certified certification level, only three points shy of silver. The key accomplishments achieved by this project include water use efficiencies and reductions, optimizing energy performance, construction waste management recycling, improved indoor environmental quality, and innovation in design. Achieving this significant milestone would not have been possible without the support of the School Board, the Board of Supervisors, the superior design from our architect, Hord Copeland &amp; Mac, and the exceptional construction management from the contractor, Lockridge Construction. However, what made this certification a reality was the key leadership provided by our principal, Mike Seibothin, and the superb project management provided by our own Tom Henry and Mac McKeithen, who's not here tonight. So, I'd like to say congratulations, Mike and Tom, for a job well done. And this is one of many projects that we plan to bring into the fold. Yes, sir.
So, now we've got to figure out how to cart all the hardware home. It looked heavy. That's why they were throwing it around. He was waiting to hand it off to you. Moving on to our next item is Agenda Item 4.02. With regard to this one, I will be passing off the gavel to Ms. Egan. This is about a resolution to commend Kelly Ralston and Brian Schmidt, who I would like them to come forward, please. We had the honor of having them involved in bringing the Electrify Your Strings, Mark Wood, to us. And Ms. Bellino, because she knows that I don't do technology, is going to tee up a video for you all to see about the event. And then, I will read resolution about that.
I think it's so important that we recognize the importance of great teachers. And I think that you guys all recognize and acknowledge the fact that without great teachers, we are nothing. These four walls, right? These four walls do nothing for us. It's what's inside this wonderful building that magic occurs. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to announce all of the names of the great string teachers that have worked with us tirelessly, and I want you all to give them a standing ovation. Now, I'm going to announce their names, and then we're going to all rise and bow down to them. In fact, they should have a parade, right, for them? Every day, teachers should have a parade. So, I'm going to go down the list, but I do want to start with two people. I mean, if you're wondering, "God, how does this guy get in this school?" These two people I met, believe it or not, only eight months ago. They were student teaching in an electrifier string program in upstate New York in the middle of nowhere, in a church! Yes, we did this in a church with nuns dancing. It was crazy! And then I met Brian and Kelly, and they were tremendously important, but you know, you never know, they become successful if they get a job quickly. Well, guess what? This high school, right here, was incredibly smart and intuitive to hire two of the best string teachers. They're young, lively, interesting, and committed to the excellence of music making. So, I want to introduce these two people first, and then everybody else. Mountain View High School and A.G. Wright Middle School, Brian Schmidt, come on down right. Lawrence Strackford High School, H.H. Pool Middle School, Kelly Ralston. Shirley High Middle School, Tom McDonald. Stafford High School and Drew Middle School, N.B.C. We can't be here, but the school's here. Colonial Forge High School, Debbie Tripp. And Brookpoint High School, Rod Bergslo. Let's start with still, up and giving a standing ovation! Okay, guys, thank you so much. Bye, guys. Go back to work. No, it's amazing, I deal with hundreds of thousands of teachers at schools and students, and it always amazes me, the first five minutes of me arriving yesterday, I could tell how engaged these kids are, and how committed they are to the art of expressing themselves. So, I was so impressed, and that always comes from a teacher. When you have a classroom filled with love and encouragement, you develop a great contributor to society. So, thank you, this school, for supporting the great arts in all this school.
In case you all didn't know, what the playing in the background was, the students who were playing that evening, and I had the honor of being there. It was a fabulous event. And so, I would like to read a resolution. Ms. Kidby and Ms. Healy, if you would go down, because those are your schools. But I'd like to read this. Whereas first-year teachers Kelly Ralston and Brian Schmidt came to Stafford County Public Schools from Ithaca College and lead the orchestra programs at H.H. Pool Middle School, North Stafford High School, A.G. Wright Middle School, and Mountain View High School. And whereas on Thursday, March 10th, and Friday, March 11th, Mark Wood, a renowned musician and founding member of the Trans-Siberian Orchestra, presented his Electrify Your Strings program to Stafford County middle and high school orchestra students. Whereas this incredible program was made possible by the contacts and efforts of these two teachers. Whereas the two-day seminar culminated in a sold-out concert on Friday, March 11th, 2016, at North Stafford High School, and included performances by Stafford County orchestra students, as well as a performance by Mark Wood. Whereas Stafford County orchestra students received an incredible opportunity to experience orchestra music in a new way, with an incredible master teacher and musician. Whereas Mark Wood specifically complimented the students, the music program, and the teachers, and described the long-term positive impact of music on the students. Whereas Kelly Ralston and Brian Schmidt personify the time, attention, patience, and creativity that great educators show every day in the classroom. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board congratulates Kelly Ralston and Brian Schmidt for their innovative teaching methods and efforts in bringing a world-renowned musician to teach the students of Stafford County, and expresses its gratitude to them for their dedication to music education, commitment to learning, and the inspiration that they have brought to the teaching profession as first-year teachers, for the benefit of their students and the Stafford community. I would also like to mention, they were really great in coming tonight, because I know that they have assessments tomorrow. They're big orchestra assessments. But I would just like to personally thank you all. Thanks for choosing Stafford County as first-year students, and we can't wait to see what happens next. So, next year, everybody is going to want to rock out at the Electrify Your Strings. So, thank you all. Moving on to four- Moving on to 4.03, Ms. Egan, a proclamation regarding Music in Our Schools Month.
Okay, let's keep with the spirit. Whereas arts education, visual arts, music, drama, and dance enriches the lives of countless people through arts programs in our schools and acknowledges the arts as a powerful tool to unlock the potential of the whole child. And whereas arts education is a critical component of the learning process and develops students' creativity, self-discipline, and critical thinking abilities. And whereas research indicates that students with more arts education have higher academic achievement across the curriculum. And whereas the importance of arts education is recognized as being necessary for the fulfillment of all children. And whereas Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in Schools Month are special opportunities for our community to engage in the outgoing process of arts education and bring a heightened awareness of the importance of the arts in education. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the school board on this 22nd day of March 2016, that the school board hereby designates March 2016 be observed as Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month. The school board takes this opportunity to urge all citizens to take an interest in and give full support to the unique contribution that quality school arts education programs provide for children.
Thank you very much. We certainly had a good show of that this evening. Next, Ms. Fallon, to read our proclamation regarding National Autism Awareness Month.
A proclamation to designate April as National Autism Awareness Month. Whereas April has been designated as National Autism Awareness Month, and whereas autism is pervasive, is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social learning and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas autism occurs in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, and are four times more likely to occur in boys than in girls. And whereas more and more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism autistic spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 68 children. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it often is possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas Stafford County Public Schools provides ongoing training to educate parents and professionals about autism and its effects. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the school board on this 22nd day of March 2016, that the school board hereby designates the month of April as National Autism Awareness Month, adopted by the Stafford County School Board this 22nd day of May 2016.
Thank you very much. And as we showed in our slide on last Tuesday, autism is certainly rising in our, in our community and in our schools. And lastly, Mr. McCosker, if you would read a proclamation regarding the month of the military child.
Well, thank you. You guys honor me each year by letting me do this. A proclamation to designate April as the month of the military child. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is a proud home to more than 108,000 children, of whom 71,000 are school-aged, with parents serving in the military stationed in Virginia. Whereas April is the month of the military child, a special month to recognize and pay tribute to the military families and their children for the daily sacrifices made and for their commitment, courage, and unconditional support of armed forces. And whereas Virginia has one of the highest numbers of military school-aged children in the nation, and is committed to being an active participant in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for military children, which facilitates military children transitioning in school systems across state lines. And whereas the children of our service members continue to make significant contributions to schools, communities, the nation, and our Commonwealth, despite prolonged and repeated absences of one or both parents. And whereas in partnership with the Virginia Department of Education, Virginia Public Schools remain committed to the care and education of the children and the men and the women of our armed forces. By partnering with school liaison officers, military leaders, educators, and community organizations, Vito provides resources about the unique support needed for military service members and their families during all stages of transition and deployment. And whereas the month of the military child reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools, childcare, and youth services to military children who face unique challenges that other children never experience. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the school board on this 22nd day of March 2016, that school board hereby designates April as the month of the military child. It'll be adopted tonight and signed by our chairman. And you know, this is a, just like all proclamations, this is a very important one. They let me read it just because I had children, although they were very young. You know, I did 24 years in the Army and retired, just like some of the folks in the audience who served in the Air Force and other, other places through Marines. And you know, it is, it's a very unique experience with the military children. And I will, and I will tell you that Virginia, I was astonished that Virginia has the highest numbers of military school-aged children in the nation. So, that really tells us something. Now, this state is extra special. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me read that.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. Next, we will move on to citizens' comments. I have one speaker signed in, but I will go through the, go through everything, and then if you would wish to speak after I call his name, if you want to line up behind him so we can go right after each other after speaking. If you are not signed in, to go ahead and use the clipboard. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The green light will come on. After two minutes, the yellow light will come on, and then red. If red comes on, please take the final five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting for a predetermined maximum number of minutes with approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. I have Mr. Trigger, Jeffrey Trigger, and like I said, if anybody else would also like to wish to speak, feel free to go up, go ahead and line up behind Mr. Trigger so you can come on forward. And Mr. Trigger, since you heard all of this, are you going to sing?
My mom was a music teacher, but I'm definitely not.
Sorry.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live at 518 Clint Lane, and I currently teach English at Gale Middle School. Last year, I introduced a program called Basket Books to find a way to get to students who are not reading outside of the classroom to read. This was, in my opinion, a crazy idea that would not have much benefit. However, I'd learned that I was wrong, and that this after-school mediation program has a lot of merit. Basket Books is a very simple program. The students are chosen by their English teachers to receive a permission slip to attend. Who's to return the permission slip, stay after school. This program starts by allowing the kids 10 minutes to have a small snack and water. And at 3:15, we read for 30 minutes in the gym. And this year, we read Last Shot by Mike Lupica. This is a good choice because this book isn't intimidating in length, and since the topic of the book includes basketball, you have buy-in from the students. At 3:45, the students play basketball until 4:15, and then they're dismissed. This sounds like something very simple, and it is. However, last year, I gave a star test to all the students on the last day of attendance. Every single student showed scaled score growth. None of the students were predicted to pass the reading SOL, and yet, two did. Even more impressive, one of those boys has gone on to make straight As this year in seventh grade. Stafford County is facing a reading crisis. This year, 40% of my students came in reading below grade level. 22% were reading at least a grade and a half below grade level, and 10% were reading at least two and a half grade levels behind. This program gives something for kids that they like to do, and even better, it's cheap. I would like to find a way to get Basket Books into all the middle schools within the county, maybe even in a summer school program, to give those in need a Head Start before they might even begin middle school. Let's make reading fun again and get Basket Books into the hands of all students who need it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If so, please come forward. If not, then I will close citizen comment, and we will move on to superintendent's comments. Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like Mr. Wolf to come to the podium and provide the board with some updated information regarding our revenue for FY '17.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson. The total, by the way, what I'm passing out is a schedule which I thought would be beneficial to each of you to know what the individual changes to the state funding that resulted from the General Assembly's action to reconcile both the House of Delegates and Senate versions of the budget up with the governor's budget. And the total increase is just a little bit shy of $1,350,000. And you can see from what I've provided to you that the, the major changes had, came from basic aid increasing and supplemental lottery per pupil allocation increasing, along with a compensation supplement. In essence, the compensation supplement was funded by decreasing the additional instructional positions and decreasing funding for at-risk. So, that compensation supplement, though, does not really have any restrictions for 1% for us is a little bit shy of $2 million. So, we're already including increases of almost $4 million for the 2% salary increase that we have. And teachers make up about half of our employee population, so even at that, we have more than enough funding that we're providing where we're not limited to accepting this funding. And in short, what this does is basically funds the million seven, it funds the $1,350,000 of the million seven that you've asked for as an addition in your approved from what the superintendent had included in his recommended budget. And so, we still have some work to do in closing the gap. Any questions?
Questions?
I'm sorry, can you say that last part, just, the last two sentences that you said? How much of a gap are we left with after this?
Well, you've asked for a million seven, so the delta here is about $350,000.
From the superintendent's funding request, or from?
No, no, no. From where you last were.
For our school board.
Right. So, if you received no extra funding from the county, the million seven in additional expenditures that you had included in the approved are funded to the extent of $1,347, you'd have to come up with an additional $352,000.
Okay. So, that, and that's based off of the county administrator's submission to his board, correct?
That is correct.
So, it's $300,000 gap, essentially.
$352,000, yeah, some odd.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Kidby? Oh. Just real quick, I wanted to make sure, in looking at these funds that are coming
in from the state, are any of them designated specifically for certain programs, or are these, can these all go into operating, general operating?
These are the fundings for the programs that we actually have in place, so we're entitled to these funds.
Okay. So, we have all these programs in place, so we can use those?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I.
One of the things that what did increase was the Virginia Preschool Initiative, but to the extent that we actually had that program in place, we were not really eligible to keep that additional $19,000, some odd hundred dollars. And that was double-checked with Kathy Massey from Head Start.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes. Hey, thanks. This is good news. I first would like to thank the board for, you know, my dad passed away, and I was out for a little bit and getting stuff done at home and with mom. And the board did a Herculean effort getting, getting over there in front of the school, Board of Supervisors and getting the budget laid down. So, long story short is, as I understand it, we, you know, Dr. Benson went over there with a $1.2 million ask. They funded that, and then we went back over, we went back, and we said, hey, we need to add more to the class size reductions.
Mr. McCosker, can I correct you?
Yeah.
Because we all need to be using the same terminology.
Okay.
Dr. Benson gave an informal presentation of his funding request that was submitted to us.
Okay.
He did not present his funding requests to them in official capacity.
Oh, okay. Well.
Our only funding request to the Board of Supervisors was what we provided for them last Tuesday night.
Okay. Well, they funded his unofficial request of 1.2, so I'm good with that. So, and that's, but yes, you're technically correct. So, but still, we went over there as a board and asked for more money to, for class sizes to the tune of 1.7, in addition to the 1.2. So, this is good news. This 1.3 will leave us, like you said, 350K, roughly a delta that we can easily make up, I think, with a couple of sharp pencils. So, I think this is good news. And once again, Ms. Kidby asked the right question. We can apply this, this money to, because in operation, to reduction of the class sizes of wherever we want, right?
I've double-checked. There are no limitations to the use of these funds.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Healy.
I'm only asking this question now, but I would be curious, and perhaps we can get this another time, or maybe in a memo or something. These, these amounts seem a bit odd, like ESL, $368? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we've determined that, that we're, you know, we need two ESL teachers in addition to what we already have, just to meet the state standards. So, it's, I'm just curious.
This is the increase. They had funding in there to the tune of about 900 some odd thousand.
I mean, in a budget as large as ours is, to increase a line by $368, just, I'd like to see how they did that math. So, at some point, we could get those calculations.
But we'll take the money.
I mean, we, yeah, we've determined we need about $150,000 or $140,000 in that line. Thank you.
But we will take it.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's in the plus.
Yes, that $368 will do some good.
Ms. Fallon.
Just so I understand, this is my first budget cycle, so I just want to make sure I understand. What you're saying is we would be about $350,000 short if the board, the Board of Supervisors kept the funding the way that it was in, in Mr. Romanello's budget?
Yes.
With the same amount of local funding and then this additional state funding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any, all right. Dr. Benson, I will move on to you for what else you have.
So, that's some good news. Next part is not good news from my perspective, and I just want to share this publicly. Dr. David White.
Boo. 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 Hiss. Boo. Traitor. Just got promoted, now he's leaving. Boo.
Dr. White will be.
I will congratulate you, Dr. White.
Superintendent of King William County Schools, effective May. And even though I've only known Dr. White for a short period of time, he's done some incredible work for us in the school division, and I remind him that there's more work to be done before you leave. So, just, just to put that out there. But he's been an incredible asset for us as an organization, and we wish you well, but we also are going to feel the loss of your presence here with us. So, thank you for what you've done. And so, that was kind of sad, wasn't it? Yeah. So, we need to, I'd like to end on something positive, right?
New shoes?
New shoes.
What's so positive about that?
Well, here's the, here's the thing. So, why, why I love working in this county. We, we had an incredible performance at the Fine Arts Festival of our third-grade musical. It was a production of The Shoemaker and the Elves, and I was fortunate to be asked to be the narrator, and it was just incredible. The kids did an incredible job. Our, our music teachers are just unbelievable, their ability to, to put all that together, write all those songs, get the kids, you know, practiced and rehearsed in their own separate components, and then come together on the day of the production and pull it all together is really, really incredible. So, I had a really good time narrating. And then at the very end, two elves came out on the stage. It was The Shoemaker and the Elves, right? Okay. Two elves came out, and they had a bag. And in that bag, they had a pair of shoes, for me, that, that are the running shoe that I run in. The model, the version, the size. So, and I have to say, there is something magic about them, because I was having some foot pain, and I've run in these a half a dozen times, it's gone. So, just a thank you to everybody that had a part in that.
The magical elves, huh?
I'm telling you, I was, it was just really a great, not necessary, you know, much appreciated. I'm telling you, I was, it was just really a great, not necessary, you know, much appreciated, but what a great way to say we are a community of schools in Stafford County, so just want to share that. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Elf magic, how fun, so, that's right, what a wonderful opportunity. Let's move on to Section Seven, Consent Items. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously for consent items seven point oh one, oh two, and oh three. Moving on to action items. Eight point oh one, approve superintendent's revision to policy eleven fourteen, school board clerk, deputy clerk. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve eight point oh one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Did she buy the water with the savings yet?
We like, we like this.
We congratulated from baby bottles to big ones.
That's right.
Big girl.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Took our parking signs away.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to eight point oh two, approve YMCA school age childcare contract with a usage fee of thirty thousand per year.
Motion to approve eight point oh two.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
One, via email, I saw Mr. Hiron's asked a question about, did you get that answered, Scott, about the?
I did. And the question was related to, adjacent to Conway, there is a, not kinder care, mini land being constructed, a regular for commercial, for profit daycare, and I asked if there was going to be any effect on the YMCA program, before and after school program at Conway. And even in my note, I said, I don't think so, there's going to be the need for, for that always, and they are going to be more affordable to more families, and I'm sure it's going to continue, I just want to make certain, so go Y.
So, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to eight point oh three, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to adopt eight point oh three.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to eight point oh four, approve the superintendent's recommended school calendar for school year twenty seventeen eighteen. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, there are.
There's two options.
There are two options in here, we had.
Two options, so I move to approve option two.
Okay.
Which makes Veterans Day a holiday.
Veterans Day holiday.
For everyone.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
For option two, is, was, who made the motion?
I did.
The original motion was just, I don't know what option it was.
So, I will amend my motion to be move for approval for option two.
And a second or agreed?
Second, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion or clarification, questions? Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, I'm glad we're, made a motion to, the motion was to approve Veterans Day as a holiday. I know this coming school year, it will be a holiday for everyone, and what we're approving is the year after the next fall. So, for the next two years, Veterans Day will be a holiday for students and for staff. And in the second year, the two thousand seventeen eighteen that we're approving here, I understand it's on a Friday, so that makes it even better. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, just real quick, you know, I read the proclamation, you know, and it told that Virginia was one of the highest in the nation of military families, so that's very appropriate, I think. So, I appreciate the board's support of that. Also, you know, not tied to this calendar, I know the Calendar Committee of thirty-plus folks are doing great work on the calendar, and came up, finally came up with these two options, but I would like Bruce to go back and kind of look at the elementary school days, the, you know, we have a lot of our comparison divisions that don't have that, those twelve, thirteen half-days in the elementary school schedule. So, you have some professionals in the elementary school world saying, you know, yeah, I need them, and then some saying, no, I don't, because right now, we're, I think we're sitting at about six point something days for our snow days on elementary, about seven for, seven point something for middle, and about eight point something for high school. And what happens is we end up, we end up busting the elementary six days, and everyone, as a school system, shuts down for that. So, so could we just look at that and maybe bring it back to the board on the snow days so that we, you know, we can bump up those, maybe take two or two and a half of those half-day releases off and bump up that elementary school bank time, and then we won't get in the positions that I think we've gotten in over the years? Because right now, there's two days not used, high school days, but then they're going to kind of just go by the way of the dodo. So, I would just like a laydown of our bank days and our, you know, bounce it off our calendar, like Prince William has no early releases, you know, for elementary, so I just want to, I think we need to look at it, because it's a problem.
I think that perhaps.
At a later, later information brief.
Perhaps Ms. Neely could bring us some information from the elementary perspective of either, you know, the rationale. I know we had a pretty detailed email from one elementary school teacher, which is at least, you know, a perspective, but maybe just a broader inquiry. It was more than one, but, but just to get that.
And that's, and that's great. And I'll be a little bit more specific in my data research, and then we can chat.
Madam Chairman, this is unrelated, but since Mr. McCosker raised the question of the bank time, we had asked, or I had asked at the last meeting, I think Mr. Hiron's did as well, about the bank time for Stafford High School, and, you know, are we in a position where we can stop making those kids have to get up, you know, get to school ten minutes earlier? Is that something that is going to be reported, or have we already taken action on that?
No, it will be coming to the board. We're going to be updating the board in the weekly update this week with the analysis and bringing a recommendation to the board at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have the moved and seconded regarding the calendar.
Option two.
For approval of option two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item eight point oh five, approved proposed amendments to policy forty-three oh four. Do I have a motion? Any motion for approval?
Eight oh five only had like one sentence. It was superintendent shall promulgate regulations establishing, that was it. Basically, he's the boss, he's in charge, he's going to do the salaries.
Is that a motion?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well.
Oh, yes.
Just to clarify, this says the superintendent shall promulgate regulations establishing guidelines for the placement of teachers on the annual approved salary schedule. It's the placement, not the, necessarily the salaries. Indirectly, it's the salaries, but.
Dr. Benson?
Well, Madam Chair, yes, this is for us to be able to give credit for comparable kinds of experience, for example, working in a training hospital or school counselors that are working in public or private agencies that might not be schools, and we've not been able to do that. So, we want to be able to place folks on the scale and recognize that experience that they're bringing to the division, although it might not be in a K-12 setting, we believe it would be comparable and should be considered in placement on the scale.
And I have no objection at all to that, I just wanted to clarify that this wasn't you setting the salaries.
Right.
Unless you want people to think that, then you'll be very popular.
No, ma'am.
Or not.
No, he doesn't set the salaries, he just tells them what step they're coming in on. There's a big difference there.
It's the background information to say that that's our responsibility.
You're the lawyer, you're the lawyer, you're the lawyer, I get, you're right, you're right.
All right, well, we have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to eight point oh six, approve the award of a professional service contract to Ascent Engineering Group in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars using VPSA bond series for full building commissioning services in support of the rebuild Moncur Elementary Project.
Motion to.
No, no, I get to do this one.
I'll turn your mic on.
Motion to approve eight point oh six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Correct? Okay. Eight point oh seven, approve the award of a construction contract to Air Tech Solutions in the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand using FY fifteen carryover funds for the repaired gymnasium roof at the Gary Melchers Complex project.
Move to approve eight oh six, uh, seven?
Second. Any discussion?
I can't wait to see this gym, with a dry roof. Take us on a tour when that roof's done.
Ms. Kidby, did you have a question?
Take the buckets away.
All right. Exactly. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items. Number nine point oh one, discuss possible redistricting of APU one eighty-eight England Run from Ferry Farm to Falmouth Elementary School. Mr. McCosker, would you like to be our lead?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the board's patience. This popped up on the, on the calendar last meeting that I couldn't attend for the information, and so moving it to this meeting, and I really appreciate it. I put together some slides, I hope you can see them quickly.
Superclerk has.
Superclerk has got the slides uploaded, and she's probably already proofread it once or twice, and got all my poor grammar out. So, anyway, this is, this discussion, this redistricting of APU England Run, this is something that's been popping up and coming up and up to us, and then going back, and then coming up through the public, and then going back for a few years now. And last year, it was brought up by some constituents, and, you know, I wanted to make sure that before we did this, we couldn't try to fix the bus problem on seventeen. And so, I said, no, I don't want to redistrict these children, and let's see if we can fix the bus problem, but that hasn't happened. I know you'll see some, some bus route timing, times, but I've already checked with the school and the kid, the time the kids get in the class, and it's, and it's after, you know, a good deal after nine, eighty percent of the time. So, slide. I've got my super, I've got my super thing that doesn't work now.
Oh, no.
I've got my, this thing should take down an airplane, but it's not doing very well here.
I see it, well, I did see it.
Well, anyway, okay.
And now he's on it.
So, anyway, discussions, topics, bottom line up front, we'll talk about that, background, redistricting data, some suggested actions, and then comments. All right, next. So, bottom line up front is, you know, this is our statement that, you know, we'd like to do, you know, we want to mitigate the student hardship of these long bus rides from Ferry Farm Elementary. We'll show you a map, kind of on the, a couple of slides further. It's about sixty-five kids, it's not a hundred, it's not a hundred and ten, it's not eighty, it's sixty-five, and of that, I think ten are graduating, and so, we don't know what we're going to get for, ten or eleven are moving up to middle school, so, and we don't know what we're going to get for the kindergarten grade yet. But, you know, these kids are on England Run, which is that far, far, you know, west of ninety-five, past the, you know, the parking lots for commuting. And so, you know, we, there's always been talk about, they came out of Rocky Run originally, elementary school that was overcrowded, and there's always been talk about putting them either to Falmouth or some other school. Falmouth doesn't have to be the, the school, whatever the board suggests and the staff suggests that they move. Slide. Background, I know this is a long dissertation, but I wanted to give you all something to read before the slides, and so, you know, in two thousand and eleven, basically, we did a spot redistricting of about eighty childrens from Rocky Run. We sent Margaret Brent a few, a few to, and the rest of them, basically, to Ferry Farm, a few to Hartwood. The third elementary school was supposed to be Falmouth, but it was due to renovation, which got cut off, it, we couldn't do it. So, instead, they went, the bulk of them went to Ferry Farm. You know, for years, the students APU one eighty had long bus rides, they continually, and today, even now, they arrive late for instruction. They get to the school about eight fifty, eight fifty-five, and by the time they get into the school, it's about nine, nine-ten, nine-fifteen. And not only are the kids late, and some of them bring, bringing their breakfast in to class, because some of them get breakfast before they come in, but the teacher also holds up instruction until the kids get there. So, it's not only affecting these sixty-five kids who are arriving late, but the whole class itself is kind of, kind of on hold until the kids get there. And so, you know, it's just not a very conducive environment for those kids. And they come off an hour-plus bus ride, and it's just, it's just not conducive for the young kids. And this, you know, so, you know, Ferry Farm PTA said something, the school officials and other principals, a hundred percent behind it, you know, Bob Freeman, about, you know, moving the kids back to the school that's a lot closer to them. Because, you know, when I came on the board in two thousand and twelve, January, this was supposed to, the kids were supposed to go back to Falmouth in a closer school, but it just never happened, for whatever reason. So, and the other, you know, one of the other drawbacks that a lot of the folks in the schools talk about is, you know, there is a lack of parental involvement, student involvement in the school, they can't participate in after-school, we don't have buses to bring them back and forth to Ferry, to England Run and Warrington Road, and they miss a lot of things like super singers and perch club and a lot of those things that Bob Thomas does after-school with the kids, and they just kind of don't feel part of the community. And the community feels that, you know, we're doing a disservice to these kids by keeping them here. Slide. So, here's the map. Here's the, my pointer does not work, but you have seen this. Ferry Farm is down here in the southern part of the county, and this green area is Ferry Farm, and the kids we're talking about are up here west of ninety-five in this area, that's the England Run kids, and then there's some kids on the other side, so there's about thirty-five up here, there's about thirty or so down here, just east of ninety-five, okay? So, it's not all sixty-five are up here. And that, and so, they were scheduled to go to Rocky Run, you know, this years back, but because of the overcrowding, we kind of went to Falmouth, they skipped Falmouth Elementary School, which is here, and they came down to Ferry Farm. And so, that's the problem, we want to send them on that short bus ride over to Falmouth, you know, to get, to get this, this long bus ride, because right here, this is a killer area right here, ninety-five, with traffic in the morning, the commute in the morning, because I do it on seventeen, and the commute in the evening, it's just terrible, and the kids just, just are on the bus forever. Slide. So, you know, here are some numbers, these numbers come off, these are a little bit dated, these numbers are October numbers, so I tried to get, I tried to find the most current numbers without bugging the heck out of the school division over the last couple of days. And so, you know, this is what you're looking at, you know, Ferry Farm's sitting at about six sixty-seven, about, you know, ninety-one percent of design capacity, not, not program capacity. And for those who don't know the capacity question, that's the, the design capacity is what, this is how many kids should fit in the school, and the program capacity is because of special education classrooms, other classrooms, these are the amount of kids that fit due to the programatics of the school into the school. So, so you see that some of the numbers are way over, if you look at the program capacity side. But long story short, the Ferry Farm's at ninety-one, Falmouth's sitting at about sixty-seven percent, Hartwood's about eighty-two, Margaret Brent's getting up there at about ninety-one, they're the same as Ferry Farm. So, what I'm suggesting is that, you know, either Falmouth or Hartwood or both, that the school board agree to move the kids for the next year, next slide. So, way ahead, long story short is, you know, I'd like the board's support to redistrict this APU one eighty-eight, and I put Warrington Road, because I wasn't sure that the Warrington Road kids east of ninety-five were APU one eighty-eight, I couldn't come up with that data. But allow staff to develop options to receive, so, you know, we agree that, at least we'll, we'll put the owners on staff to come back and develop options. If they don't like an option that's up here, maybe something else. But I think, I think the long story short is, that I want you to agree on, is, hey, Ferry Farm, we're doing a disservice to those kids on that, on that bus. And Susan Randall came in here the last three years talking about it, and you all have heard her, you all know it, she was the PTA president, and so, she speaks for the community. You know, they're, and, you know, these are good kids, and they, so, but in order to ensure our public hearings, you know, we need to make sure that we kind of do this, this fast to get this in seventeen, you know, for the next school year. So, so with that, I would like to, I don't think there's another slide. So, so with that, I would like to, I don't think there's another slide. Yeah, no. So with that, I'd like to see what the board, what the board thinks. I'm not going to ask for a motion, but.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
It's, we're already looking at April. Do we have enough time to hold the public hearings and everything that we need to do to kind of be in compliance with?
Well, that's why I brought it back to the staff, although it is, it is, it is not the, we're moving a thousand kids. You know, we are moving sixty. So, I would ask the staff to come back with that.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
I don't think we have enough time. These kids, I, granted, it's not a lot, it's sixty-five, but a majority of these kids are disadvantaged to a certain extent. And they end up in the middle of things like this an awful lot. We got, we, we heard quite a bit about this when we did the middle school redistricting. You know, it's the disadvantaged neighborhoods that seem to, to take the brunt of these redistrictings. I don't necessarily disagree with the whole idea and concept, and it needs to be done. We just need to do it with, that gives us time. We can, I'm sure we can get into doing everything that we need to do mandated-wise within the timeframe, and we could make it happen. But that's providing a disservice to these kids. Because this has to take a very close conversation with those students, those parents, those families, that neighborhood. And, you know, frankly, it provides us with a great opportunity to reach out to a neighborhood, to neighborhoods that need, need us to communicate with them more. And need to make sure we understand how we can provide better service. I think our speaker, one of the citizens' comments tonight, I believe those students end up in the middle school where he teaches at, and probably has some of the kids that were bused to Ferry Farm in his baskets for books. Is that the right title? Program. So, it's, it's, I don't disagree, but I'm really, really concerned about the timeframe. I'd rather put it, let's say, let's start this in October of next year for the following school year. I do have a specific question, though. Why is, like, Falmouth Bottom, Ingleside, and that neighborhood not included in this? Those, they are west of Route One, so that we would still have buses going across Route One to get all the way down to, out to Ferry Farm. I don't know how many students we're talking about there, probably a few more.
We're only talking about students on England Point Drive, Quarles Road.
Right.
And Noble Court.
Why wouldn't we include everything west of, of Route One?
All that, all that green does not go to Ferry Farm. Those kids, those thirty-five kids are the only.
If you go back to your map, it does. It shows that they do. Ingleside, Pill Hill, Falmouth Bottom, they all go to Ferry Farm.
Well, the report I got from the principal, from Mr. Freeman, was that the kids that are on that bus.
And that's a little bit of the analysis. I'd like to hear from staff when we do this. And I think it has to be very methodical, because, you know, we do hear different things from transportation than what we hear from the school. And, you know, I'm taking your report from the school at its word. You know, I trust it, because Mr. Freeman's there every day. He sees it. He can't lie about that.
Right.
But what we hear from transportation doesn't necessarily match up. I would like to know what type of mitigation we have done with the bus routes, what kind of success we've had. We'd also have to see what the effect would be. You know, Falmouth is a tough school as well. It's Title I school. A lot of concerns there. What happens there when we add, whatever it may be, whether it's thirty, I think, in your, and, you know, kind of your, your back-of-the-napkin proposal here, or the full sixty-five.
No, and I totally agree, but Falmouth is a Title I school, and it has the Title I resources. And that's what Ferry Farm doesn't have. So, so not only are you, and I mean, I wasn't going to get into the title, you know, so about eighty percent of these kids are, the ones that I have projected here, are under free and reduced. Not a hundred, but about eighty percent. And so, you know, Falmouth is the place for, for these kids.
Then you're increasing the intensity. You know, and that's, you know, I don't know.
The intensity is increased by us adding $1.4 million to special education every year over and above our bottom line, and that's, but that's not coming to, it's not coming to Ferry Farm.
Can you put that slide back up?
Yeah. She's got it down there. Put the map slide.
I think we need to put this slide up that shows the, the assignments, because if you look at that slide, anybody can look at that slide and see that that line for Ferry Farms doesn't make any sense.
Well, but I think that that's the other issue, is I don't have a problem, wouldn't have a problem moving this, but I think we have a bigger redistricting issue on our hands. Because I could sit here, Irene and I could sit here and make the same argument for kids of ours that are now going to Stafford Middle School, thanks to the redistricting last year, that live all the way down behind Lowe's and sit in that traffic that takes them, because I know, because I sit in it, take my kids to school every morning, can take forty-five minutes to an hour. And those kids are, again, and it's the same thing. It's kids that are in neighborhoods where they tend to be slightly disadvantaged, and we don't have, they don't have the representation.
And if we do it, I'd like to see, you know, is this the right time? Also, discuss that town and country area that go to Conway currently. We talked about, you know, holding them at Conway for now until Ferry Farm is rebuilt, but would that provide an opportunity to do that?
Right. So, yeah, I mean, so, so, you know, looking forward on this, what Mr. Hyrens is talking about is, you know, this whole APU goes to Falmouth or whatever, and, because right now, we're, you know, this Conway right here, we have folks that are five minutes away from our school here. So, you know, part of this is, hey, let's get the kids back into a school that's close to them, that makes sense. They don't even feed into the same middle school that the Ferry Farm kids feed into. They feed into Gale. Let's get them back into their schools, what they feed, you know, and their feeder patterns, and get them off this long, this long route passing, you know, this school, this school, all the way down here to Ferry Farm. And let's start talking about cutting us this neighborhood on Conway. As Leland builds, you're going to need to relieve Conway. And that's exactly what's, what's the next step. Looking, you know, we, we used to complain about, hey, we're not looking forward enough on our redistricting. I'm telling, I'm looking forward enough. You know, it's just.
I agree with you. I just, I mean, we've got the exact same thing up north, so that's why I think we need to look at it in a bigger picture, because we're sitting on wide order and Moncurra that are at capacity as it is.
Right. Well, I get that, but I came to the party with slides about Ferry Farm tonight.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just saying.
So I came to the party with very gifts, so I just, I'm just looking for some support. So, and I'll be happy to support you on your, you know, build it out and talk about it, and I'm there, and I support a lot of you on different things.
Redistricting's never a party.
And redistricting's not, but it's, you know, it's the right thing to do. These kids, you're right, it's only sixty kids. I mean, but, but. And, you know, and if, you know, Falmouth has been sitting, not talking about Falmouth, but Falmouth has been sitting at five hundred and forty folks, you know, ever since their, you know, their refurbishment. And they're at sixty-one percent filled, so I mean.
That's going to start the conversation of moving to Falmouth. Does that save any bus travel time? They still have to go through, traverse both intersections, 95 and Route One, or if we talk about the other ones going to Hartwood. You know, some of them still have to traverse the same impacts that caused the majority of the delay in their commute. And I'm not so certain that going to Falmouth would shorten their commute.
Well, I mean, what I, what I asked for was, was the support of the board to go to the staff and come back with some options.
I support it if we give them a deadline of October one to bring us back the options.
I think, I think, I think we need to, I think we need to go, we can, I think we could do this earlier than October one.
Madam Chair.
I know you want to push it off to next year, but I don't think that's the right answer.
Can I just give my two cents?
Sure.
I was involved with the CIP Advisory Committee when we started mapping out the whole plan for the renovations at all the elementary schools. And unfortunately, we, as Mrs. Randall said on numerous occasions when she's come in here, that we missed the bus last year on this one. This should have been included in, in the spot redistricting that we did for Conway. This one should have been included. So I agree with you, Mr. McCosker, the, and to you, Mr. Hyrens, to a certain extent, too. But we're not going to get those answers unless Mr. McCosker's given the opportunity to get the information from staff so that we can figure out what is the shortest distance, because those kids have been forgotten. And I would like to see something happen with it. Again, we should have done it last year, and it got missed, so I support Mr. McCosker in getting this done, at least talking about it. Let's, let's look at some of the options that we have. Thanks.
Ms. Kidby?
I think you have.
My concern mirrors Mr. Hyrens' concern in, in terms of the timing. I want to make sure, particularly in light of some of the issues that we had with our last redistricting, that we do this very strategically. I have no objections to the staff looking at it, but I don't want to try and push it through quickly. I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at before we, we take any action. I know it's sixty-five kids, but you know what? It's sixty-five kids. Whether it's one kid or a hundred and one, it's still a child that has to move from someplace they're comfortable and, and they know to a place perhaps they don't know, even though it may be in their best interest. So I want to make sure we do it correctly if we're going to do it.
Ms. Ealy?
I think I'm the only board member left that was on the board at the time of that redistricting. And my recollection was that those students would have been assigned to Falmouth, but that was the year that Falmouth was going to be renovated. So there wasn't room at Stafford Middle if we added those students to the Falmouth students. We had not graduated to getting the learning colleges that we got, you know, later on when the Grafton went. But anyway, the intent was that this be revisited, because, well, it's gone now, but if you look at that, it certainly, I think it's a hardship on the students to put them on the bus and to be coming in late for school that disadvantages them. So I, and I'm, I'm not even looking at the free and reduced, because to me, that's not, you know, that should, they shouldn't be penalized and moved farther than they need to be moved. But the, the intention at the time was that this be revisited, and Mrs. Egan said we should have done, last year, we probably should have done it way before last year, if it would make a better educational opportunity for those students. And if you look at that, and they're passing Falmouth, they're passing Grafton, and they're passing Conway, all to get to Ferry Farms. And looking at those percentages, I know from being at Margaret Brent, which is at ninety-one percent capacity, that ninety-one percent feels more like a hundred and.
They're at nine oh four.
Plus.
They're at nine hundred and six kids.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just way too crowded, or maybe they're even higher than ninety-one now. But if we have a school that's at sixty-seven percent that's closer, and then we've got a school that's ninety-one percent, to me, I don't see how it could not be a better opportunity for, for the students. And it's our job to make sure that the schools have the resources that are needed.
We don't have enough information yet, and granted.
Just looking at the numbers.
We want, we want, we want to have the discussion. If, if there's a way to, if you're comfortable saying, you know, let's go forward. And I will even say, if we can get it rolling, and if it starts looking like, okay, we could do this with the proper communication and outreach and touch to these children who are, who may have to leave their school. Because frankly, you know, some of these kids, the school is the only thing they have. So they have that connection, and we don't want to break that connection. And they, they'll be welcomed, and they'll be held and hugged just as much at their new school. But I want to make sure, absolute certain, not a single one of those kids slips through the cracks. Because when we're bouncing them back and forth, which that neighborhood is primed for that, just because of the location as much as anything, you know, that's, that's just my fear, is one of them is going to, one or more is going to slip through the cracks, and that's where we fail them. So I'm, I'm good to go forward and start gathering information.
And I, Madam Chairman, I would like to ask Dr. Benson if he could, you know, look at the options, and part of that may be to breaking this into more than one part. But at least, you know, give us some options that we can, can start to make this, you know, a better experience for these, these students and being on the bus all that time, back and forth.
What I think that I have heard this evening is a desire of the board to at least look into this. We can't promise tonight that we will get it done, but we, we have to see what the options are. I think we will need to have bus, current bus times, arrival times, just so we have the data, the commute times to other schools, the updated capacity based on current numbers. And what else do we have? Some options and, and ideas also regarding communication. My only concern with seeing June is when you transfer the students, making sure the files and the handoffs go. So we just need to make sure, too, with school administration, that we, we have that covered. I think that it can be done, but it's got to be very targeted. I believe those are some of the items that we will need from staff, Mr. McCosker. Other items, I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, and that was the intent of the, it wasn't, you know, to put a motion on the table to agree. You know, I think, I think all of your comments are worthwhile. There's a lot of options. There's, you know, superintendent can move five percent of the population of the school without the redistricting process, according to state of Virginia code. So there's, there's a lot of things that can happen, and so I just, I just appreciate that. And I'll keep in contact with, you know, with Bob about the kids, what time they get in the class, and so we'll make sure we have that data, too. And I'm sure Ms. Neely will get it.
And I think I would add one other thing. I know that there were some measures after this was identified that the school and others tried to, to implement. How successful, and are there further ones if we need to in an interim position?
Barry Suddith, yeah. Barry and his crew did a great job trying to help out with the bus, and they did, they did shorten the bus times a little bit. The problem is, they're still not getting to the class at, at school hour.
So we can look at some of those other broader measures to help, or that would be, in my opinion, part of this.
Some clarity, Madam Chair.
Oops, trying.
So we're going to restrict our analysis to the APUs in question or as presented this, this evening?
That was my question.
I would like to ensure, I would like to include everything west of Route One in some sort, in some level of analysis.
And we could. It could be phased, but I think that a look at west of Route One is a good.
Yeah, there's, there's a few, there's a few streets west of Route One. England Run is the preponderance of it, but.
But you got the whole Ingleside neighborhood. I mean, there's got to be a lot of Ferry Farm kids in there.
So, Madam Chair, I will, I will need to consult with staff about what it is that we need to undertake here, and what kind of timeframe to do it in, okay? So I will need to provide that to the board. I would note that, that with the proposed sixty-five students, that that is approximately ten percent of student population, it will require a public hearing on the part of the board to move that number of students, if the board chooses to move in that direction.
Yeah, and, and, and all options means that you have, west of 95, maybe a thirty, option one, maybe a thirty, you know, start with west of 91 for next year. You know, just, just with thirty-five, and then keep east of, east of, no, ninety-one, ninety-five. You know, worry about the west of ninety-five. Fix that. That's the, you know, the preponderance of the problem, I think. And then start the following year with another thirty. I don't know, so we'll leave it up to you. You know, you guys came up with sixteen options last time about stuff. I'm sure you can come up with a few.
But just, just to be clear, we're looking at west of Route One?
West of ninety-five.
No, well, what you just suggested, a potential phased approach where we just do west of Route One, west of ninety-five.
The numbers that I have, yeah, the numbers that I have is thirty-five kids from the England Point, you know, you mentioned Ingleside. The numbers that I have are England Run, you know, from that England Run area are thirty-five kids.
Mr. McCosker, if the issue is, is transportation, maybe we ought to look at, at the, the transportation issues. As it relates to any students that are west of Route One, that should be one of the things that we look at carefully. If that's, if that's catalyst, and I'm assuming that's catalyst, there's no, in my mind, it's just the way my mind works, there's no point in, in piecemealing this and if we still have a problem. If we're going to, if we're going to fix a problem, let's fix a problem. I, just because it's, it's, it's more expedient to fix it in pieces, that's not necessarily what's in the best interest of the communities.
But then again, it could be perhaps more expedient, but more beneficial to phase it in, too. I think that's something I'd like to hear, the options, because rather than, you know, bring a ten percent increase, ten percent plus to Falmouth in one year, you know, it may be better to, you know, bring a five percent increase, and then bring a five percent the next year. As long as we're moving an entire neighborhood, you know, at the same time. We don't want to, you know, one side of the street stays and one side of the street goes. That, that's never going to fly.
It's a policy, and I don't think this was the direction that Falmouth is the only option. Because I, I, I'm going to venture to guess, you're not going to say.
option, because I'm going to venture to guess, you're not going to save any time on those bus rides going to Falmouth as opposed to Ferry Farm.
So I think we need to understand that. I think even as we look at the maps closer, we just, we need better information for now, and trying to come up with the best solution for these, for these kids and all the kids that are impacted in this, not just in this area, but also the schools that they attend. So I think it's really sort of a fact finding, where are we? And, you know, like I said, from my perspective, if we can't pull it off right now, what things can we put in place to maximize the learning experience for all kids while we move forward and look at this? So I think once we have information, we can do it. I would say a work session, though, I think is going to be something that we'll need to look at this information.
I think we'll have, just give them the opportunity to come back to us.
Right, I want to hear the options, because again, the intention at the time, and this was five years ago, was that this not be permanent.
Right.
They would have been, but for that renovation, these students would have been assigned to Falmouth, because there was room at Falmouth.
Right.
But there wasn't room at Stafford Middle to move the students, you know, up there.
And when I came on the board in January 2012, I approached Pam Cale about this issue. Okay, now that we're getting closer to this renovation completion, what is going on? And it was decided by Dr. Bridges, not, well, we're not moving them, we're keeping the kids there.
So what I'm hearing is we are going to discuss this, though?
Right.
Let's get some ideas and options, and I think we should have the initial discussion in a work session, I just think, because it'll be a lot of information, and then we can move forward.
I appreciate the board hearing me out, and it's good points, good points.
Okay, moving on to information 9.02, discuss June 14, 2016, as an instructional day in lieu of potential primary elections. Ms. Fallon, or Ms. Egan, if anybody wants to take the lead?
After you. We had voted to close schools for primary day in March for the presidential primary, but there's been some discussion about access to our schools with our general primary in June, particularly as it pertains to Moncur, because there is not another entrance for voters to go in. So I guess we're just trying to look in, look at some options and see what we can do safety-wise to alleviate the concerns of parents, and I think overall, the use of our schools as polling sites, particularly for primaries, since we are not closed those days.
Go ahead, Ms. E.
I would say, as pertains to any election, not just primaries or anything else like that, we've got some schools that are, that have older designs, that don't have the separate entryways, to have segregated areas for outside folks to enter and exit freely. Those seem to be the ones that are the concern now with some of our parents, especially given all of the security measures that we've put in place to date. I guess the intent of this was to have that conversation about, are we going to find ourselves in a position again in the future where we're forced to close down schools, because we've got security issues with some of our older schools that don't have those secondary entrances? So apparently, it takes a whole lot of different steps to get a polling station changed. You need time, you need, you need public hearings, you need notifications, I think, I guess all the voter registration cards have to be changed and remailed, so we wanted to have this conversation now, because we don't want to have, you know, next year, you know, God forbid, something happens where the parties are telling us, oh, we're going to, we're going to do a primary instead of a convention or something, and then here we are again, after a week of snow, having to close schools down again for a day. So Emily and I talked about it a little bit, and we wanted to know if Dr. Benson might be able to, you know, get with Mr. Martin's department and figure out, A, what those schools are, and B, maybe get with the sheriff's department and find out, are there any concerns? And do we need to go to the registrar to tell him, you know, whether it's through a memorandum of understanding, or amending, amending the memorandum, if we've got one in place, to say, these are the areas of concern that we have, we need to sit down and talk about maybe finding alternate, alternative locations for elections?
So it sounds like what we're hearing, as of right now, it is my understanding that it is unclear whether June 14th will be needed as a primary day. Is that, does anybody know that for sure?
As of, as of now, the only election that would be on June 14th would be primary election for Congress, House of Representatives. As of now, our sitting congressman has not challenged any primary, and is as late as last week, and I'm not sure when the final deadlines are, the opposition party has not filed anybody against him. So most likely, in all likelihood, June 14th will not be a voting day in Virginia or in the, in Stafford County. However, while my mic's on.
Yep.
I would suggest, I would like this board to take the position of requesting Moncur Elementary in particular not be, be removed as a polling station until the construction is complete and we can reassess at that point in the new building. I think Moncur, as it sits now, is probably the most secure risk school that we have for a poll, to be, to be a polling location. From the actions today, could you imagine if that happened on an election day? That'd be a disaster.
And right now, and right now, just real quick, Stafford High School is probably in the same boat right now.
Well, by the time, I wish I was. But Mr. Moran's going to be certain that the construction is complete, or at least all the roads are complete, by the time of the next election that would be held, which will be the general election in November, which, general elections were always closed anyway, so.
But we would have a primary.
So, Ms. Kidby?
But there would be a primary next year, and it would affect.
2017.
Yeah, Moncur with the.
Yeah, and that's why I would suggest that Moncur be removed as a polling, you know, recommended, we can't do anything, apparently, be recommended as being removed as a polling location. If the registrar, and granted, he may not even be able to do it by general election this year, but I would suggest by primary day next year, 2017, he most certainly should be able to find some other comparable location.
We'll pull it.
I'll have to. Ms. Kidby, I think you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the important issue here is for us to take a look at security issues that we have at all of our schools that are polling places, whether they be Moncur, or HH Pool, or Stafford High, or wherever they be. In light of what's going on in our society now, in terms of exposure to our students in public schools, I think it's very important that we don't, just like in redistricting, that we don't just analyze one little bit, that we take a look at how the schools are utilized in relation to these elections, whether they be primary or whether they be general elections, and determine whether or not we're using them in such a way that it's safe. Now, having said that, schools are public property, and we have heard that over and over and over again, that the schools are funded by the county, by our taxes, and they belong to the county. And so I believe that the school system needs to work with the county registrar and our county officials to make sure that we keep all of those things in mind. But to me, personally, as school board member, the most important thing is the safety of our students in all of our schools, particularly as we have people coming in and out at will.
Just real quick, ma'am, so what I'm hearing is, you know, Ms. Egan, I'm on board with Ms. Egan and Mr. Hirin's pulling Moncur, because it's going to be under, I'm totally good with that. You know, the sooner the better on Moncur. So, but you know, let's take a look at the schools, we, you know, we have old schools like Ferry Farm, and some of them that you just can't, but you know, have Dr. Benson take a look at them, list the schools out, have the principals also weigh in, right? And our security folks, and what do they think? You know, should it be here, should it not be there? And I'll leave it, you know, leave it to the operational folks at the school division. If they don't think it's safe, then it's not safe, and then we'll have to move it.
So what I'm hearing is, is there a, what I think I hear is a consensus of the board regarding Moncur. Is that correct? That that would be an initial?
My desire is to recommend to the registrar.
Madam Chairman, I suggest we follow Mrs. Kidby's suggestion and take a look at the other schools, and perhaps ask the superintendent to come to us with a recommendation at the next meeting as to whether we should include some of our other schools. At this point, we're talking about next spring, right? So we have some time, and I agree wholeheartedly with Moncur, but there may be other schools, so I would prefer to go, you know, in one request rather than to perhaps, you know, fall later on. And the sooner we can do it, the better, because I'm sure it's going to be a challenge to the registrar to try to find a replacement polling place, you know, in that area in North Stafford.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Egan, if I'm not mistaken, did the email that we got say that it was six months, we would require six months to?
I believe that was, that was told to us, yeah.
So then I would ask that we?
Probably by December.
Yeah, that we would have to, well, probably earlier than that.
Yeah, we want to do it by the summer.
Right.
Send in a letter.
Yeah.
You can still, you can still do the November election.
Right, right.
We're off on election day.
We don't have school on election days. However, I mean, there are people in our buildings.
However, we do have people in our buildings, so I would really like to have that coordination between our security folks, the sheriff's office, the recommended schools, if there are, as soon as we identify those and get a letter over, so we can start that dialogue with the registrar. All right. Anything else on that item? Okay, moving on to 9.03, approve the award of a construction delivery order to bayon sports surfaces in the amount of $784,506, using VPSA bond contingency funds from Stafford Rebuild and the FY16 annual operating funds for the track repair at Stafford High School.
Didn't we already, didn't this already come to us? No?
We approved using the funds, but we did not approve awarding the contract.
That's why it sounds familiar.
Because we have discussed this, Mr. Hirin, is there any urgency to this particular item? I'm not saying, but I know since this is not something that we have not seen before, I wouldn't always say that, but this is not.
There's no urgency, but certainly if the board chooses to go forward.
It can wait. Okay. All right, all right, if no further questions. Let's look at 9.04, school board review, discuss and approve biennial priorities for the new strategic plan framework. This came out of our work session at the, prior to the last meeting. Staff had put together a summary of some of the concepts that we had put together. I thought this was a well-done way of pulling our, of pulling where we would like to go. This does not include the metrics that we would use to meet these standards and goals, but I believe what we are looking for this evening, and I know this is still information, is, are we generally thinks that reflects our discussions that evening? And then going forward, anyway, let me, let me get reaction first, or Dr. Benson, I don't know if you have any comment?
No, I think you captured it, Madam Chair. We, in red, on the second attachment, are the, essentially the items that came off of the large post-its that we had on the wall, and then the statement of the board priorities is our attempt at trying to capture that in the form of a priority. So we're looking for some feedback from the board. The next step will be to identify the metrics, what are we going to measure to determine progress in those areas, and then staff will put together key strategies to hopefully move the needle in a positive direction in each one of those areas.
Thus, my comment would be, I believe we would probably want a work session to look at the metrics. I believe that, but I am certainly open to the will of the board. If these seem right in line, and we are comfortable with the metrics coming to us in a full board meeting, we can. I was suggesting potentially a short work session to look at the metrics.
Yeah, I would just, just real quick, Madam Chair, I would suggest, you all did a super job, you know, telephonically and via email, I was keeping up with you in spirit. It looks good, but I would, I would give it to the operational folks for the metrics right now.
Yep.
Have them come back to us and say, hey, this is what we think, you know, because they're going to be in the best position to give us our left and right boundary, right?
Do you prefer work session or coming straight here to us?
No, no, it should be a work session, just as soon, I think, you know.
I agree.
I mean, that's me.
I think so too. So, Dr. Benson, when you have the timing, we can do that as the work session. I know this is great work on the strategic plan, and we're moving forward, so board members stay open to our wonderful clerk sending us something about a possible work session. Is that possible at the next meeting? I don't want to push, because I know it's, that's till the 12th. Okay, could be possible for everybody, so.
As we move into the spring months, I would ask if we can do as many, not as many work sessions, but the work sessions we've already started talking about, if we can do them combined and on nights of our already scheduled meetings.
That would be my preference as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is a busy time of year. Now, I am going to poll the board, our next information item, I'm sorry, was there any more on this one? Our next information item is to approve and to look at the health and dental plan designs and rates for fiscal year 2017. Would you all like a five-minute, five-minute break, so that then the presenters can come up to get ready for that and give everybody, because I know this is an item of great interest for everybody, thought maybe everybody needs to get up and walk around.
Yes, because it's going to be much like pulling teeth.
Dental plan, ha ha. Okay, we will, for five minutes, everybody get up, walk around, and if the presenters for that want to start to come up, I'm sure you have plenty of slides and stuff, so five minutes.
It is.
All right, well, we're having a lot of fun up here. So we're on to information item 9.05, approving the health and dental plan designs and rates for fiscal year 2017. Before we hand it over to our amazing staff on this issue, we did have a very in-depth briefing last week in a joint work session with our board of supervisors on this, because this was a teeming effort between both of our boards concerning combining and sharing some services here. So we did have a very full joint presentation with Mrs. O'Brien and the, her counterpart at the county. So we have seen some of this before, and, Mr. Wolf, I'll let you.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to let Brenda, who's the queen of this, make herself available for any questions that you might have.
Our benefits queen, thank you.
Wow, I always wanted to be queen. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight. I do not have a formal presentation this evening, since we did go through it in depth, but I surely would be willing to answer any questions that you might have. I will just start by saying, after the information has gone out, I was, I guess, pleasantly surprised that we really, we've had some inquiries, but we have really not had a lot of questions about it. We went to the administrators' meeting with it today as well, and the administrators have not heard a lot of questions in their buildings either. So with that, I will just open it, and perhaps you folks have gotten more questions from the teachers in pairs and bus drivers, et cetera, in your areas?
I will ask board members first, or Dr. Benson, any comment you would like before any discussion, any overall?
Quite frankly, I think our staff and our colleagues and local government have done an exceptional job, and it is a competitive package. We believe it is sustainable, it has a lot of options, and it puts us more in line with the market in lots of different ways, but more specifically with employees that have families or employees and. that have families or employees and, and children. There, there will be a significant savings. And if I can just remind the board that we are reducing our employee contributions by approximately $2 million in this plan. That is significant. As I said to, at the meeting with our supervisors, I hesitate to say historic, given the historical nature of our county. However, this is a, a great place for us to, to be, and I too have not heard a, a great deal. I was actually at one of our high schools this afternoon, and there was a, a faculty meeting. I told folks there that I would hang around and answer any questions or concerns that they might have, or at least try to regarding healthcare. I didn't have anybody stay around at the end of the meeting to ask questions, so we're, I think we're on a good path.
Ms. Kidby?
Just real quickly, since I wasn't able to go to the meeting, I, I want to make sure that I understand, we are taking the Key Care 15, Key Care 30, and Key Care 100, and replacing it with a, a basic PPO, that's at a basic level or a premium level. Is that correct? Is that what we're doing?
That is correct. The Key Care 30 that we have currently will be exactly like the core PPO. Then there will be the premium PPO, and then the high deductible health plan, and that is a new plan that we've never had before, and that will come with it a health savings account.
Okay.
Yes, and all plans will be through Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns? All right, thank you, Ms. Iran.
Thank you very much.
As I understand it, based on our conversations last Tuesday, I believe that the board of supervisors will be considering this on their next agenda of April 5th, because it is a teamed opportunity. So, we will see it again on the 12th. That is my understanding of how their process should work. So, I just wanted to let you all know, barring any changes, that seems to be the trajectory for that.
So, we'll be taking it up at our next meeting?
Right, so it will be after their, their meeting on the 12th. All right. All right, well, moving right along. Will you be ready?
I'm ready.
Is there someone to read us into closed session?
Okay. Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss or consider appointment of personnel and personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.